Road call, city clerk, please.
Good evening. Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Good?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Seifel?
I'm here, but my red light is not on. My speaker on? My microphone on?
No. You gotta press speak. Speak. I know it's been a while. Press speak. There you go.
Uh, okay, I'm here.
Mayor Orditt?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor lead us in pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, before we start our presentations, we had a very nice couple of days of teacher appreciation days in our charter school. Uh, some had parades. It was really, really nice to show the appreciation for our teachers. So congratulations and good luck to you. Mayor? Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. I'd like to send warm, good wishes, get well wishes to our good friend Sophie Bach, who had a little bit of a tumble. Um, uh, and, uh, her son Bobby is keeping us posted of, of her progress. And we love her dearly and we wish her very, very well and a swift and speedy recovery.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sophie, answer your phone. All right. Uh, tonight, as I walked in, um, one of our employees, Glenn Reed, approached me and he said, I just wanted to thank her. And I said, for what? He said, I wanted a letter of recommendation for my son for a scholarship. And he wrote it and he got it.
Wonderful.
Got it in Tallahassee. So, congratulations, Glenn Reed.
That's really cool, Mayor.
That's great. All right. I'm gonna read a proclamation now. No place for hate day. Whereas for over a hundred eight years, the Anti-Defamation League, ADL, has broken many barriers and bridged many obstacles in carrying out their mission to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to secure justice and a fair treatment to all. And whereas the demand for ADL's resources and skills to help individuals and communities to confront, challenge, combat, and counteract hatred in all its forms is higher than at any time in recent history, in recent memory. And whereas in a spirit of unity and inclusion, I encourage all residents in the city of Pembroke Pines to commit themselves to challenging hate wherever and whenever it manifests, it manifests itself. Now therefore, I frank yours by the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines to hereby proclaim May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one as no place for hate day in the city of Pembroke Pines. All right. Dr. Haiki Nigur, are you on the line?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Are you, you're gonna make a presentation for us?
I was told that this would be shared. I can share my screen.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right. So thank you very much, um, for listening to my ten minutes. Uh, I will stick to that. So tonight, uh, I'd like to talk about climate change and risks, risks and opportunities for the city of Pembroke Pines. We all remember these pictures, haunting pictures from last winter when we had these terrible flooding. Um, and I just wanna, um, remind you that, you know, with the, with the changing climate, we are really at risk of seeing more, more of these, um, significant events as we're faced with a changing climate, uh, the hydrological cycle is changing, which means we have more significant downpours. And, um, I just wanna make sure that the city thinks about what we need to do right now, because we don't have much time left in order to be prepared for a future for our children. And this is the reason why I'm presenting this tonight, right here in the middle. This is my daughter. I wanna make sure that she has a healthy future in the city. Just to give you a brief background, I am a scientist by trade, but I don't wanna dwell on this too much. Um, over the last eight hundred thousand years, um, the carbon dioxide concentrations, which is the main greenhouse gas, have been around three hundred parts per million. And when it came time for the industrial revolution, that's when you really saw parallel track of increasing greenhouse gas emissions. Right now, as you can see, we're standing at four hundred sixteen parts per million. And, uh, this has a direct effect on the, um, heating of our planet with the greenhouse gases such as CO2. They trap the heat and basically you see a warming of the atmosphere. So what we've seen over the last hundred and forty years or so is a distinct increase in surface temperature. Um, you see the changes here, especially over the last twenty years. Twenty twenty has been the hottest year on record. And, um, it's really undisputed. Um, I don't think it's a belief. In fact, I, I know it's not a belief. It's a, it's a physical, it's a chemical fact. It's man-made, this climate change. It's actually pretty straightforward when it comes to the science. Unfortunately, I don't have time to, uh, talk about that tonight. Um, and it is clear that unfortunately we are the culprit. But the good news is there's things that we can do to change that. So just to explain to you what the sources are of these greenhouse gas emissions, and you may have seen this already, but basically, um, the first thing you need to do is take a stock of your, um, emissions, if you like. So showing here's the, the, pretty much the gold standard, the greenhouse gas protocol that shows you the various greenhouse gas sources. We were talking about direct sources, such as the direct combustion from, you know, just driving your car and burning your diesel. Of course, the, uh, generation of electricity or anything that you burn directly, maybe natural gas or propane or whatever it may be. And the generation of electricity is really captured in here, which is the indirect emissions, meaning you turn on your light, you, you use electricity, and that's how you generate greenhouse gas emissions. And then everything else is pretty much captured in scope three. And why I show that is that the city needs to think about, how do you do a greenhouse gas inventory? I believe there was one done a few years back. But, you know, we're, we're, we're in a changing environment and it's important to update that every year. Um, what are your scope one and your scope, uh, two emissions, but even more important, what are your scope three emissions, which as an example, you know, could be upstream, your vendors and so on, or downstream, your, um, your residents, such as myself. Really what we need to look into is how do we, um, counter this changing climate? And there is two approaches that need to be pushed forward on a parallel track, which is the mitigation adaptation. Uh, the state of Florida, where the governor has a lot of focus on adaptation, which is important as well, because you really need to manage, um, you know, increased, um, hazardous events and so on. But really, we need to get to the root cause and that's where mitigation comes into play. And there's much more literature on that, that unfortunately I can't talk about tonight. Um, but basically mitigation approaches are shown here, such as sustainable transportation, clean energy, energy efficiency, basically anything you can do to get away from fossil fuels, from man-made greenhouse gases, where we're, yeah, I'm looking at solar energy and so on. We have distinct challenges in Florida, but also opportunities. Um, our utilities are not favoring renewable energy back. Most of the fuel in Florida comes from natural gas. And it's important to note that natural gas is not a clean fuel. It's depicted differently, um, in the media or by the utilities. Natural gas burns about thirty percent less than, say, coal. However, it still emits greenhouse gas emissions. So just by switching to natural gas, you're only able to avoid about thirty percent, uh, greenhouse gases, but you're still emitting greenhouse gas emissions. So why are we not going to solar? And, uh, you know, right now, it's even found that most of the electric utilities are not even prepared, um, to switch their, their fuels. Um, for Pembroke Pines, I see distinct climate change risks and they're pretty much reflective all over the world. Um, you know, of course, we're, we're closer to the coast and we, we are South Florida, so there's specific conditions here. But what I wanted to point out to you, you can run these, uh, sea level models that show you, um, what a projection looks like in like one, two, three feet of rising sea levels and you'll be surprised. In fact, Pembroke Pines has been listed as the number five city of the top fifty cities most at, at risk. And I put into my presentation also all the references, so you can read up on that. Uh, why is that? Why are we so impacted by sea level? Well, we're built on limestone. Limestone is porous and with an increasing sea level, you basically have the saltwater rushing right through the limestone and getting into our city. Um, so this saltwater is not only, you know, threatening to flood our city, but of course, it's also contaminating, uh, our fresh water supply, meaning the Biscayne aquifer where we get our fresh water from. Of course, we, we see an increase in, in the frequency and strength of storms and hurricanes. Typically, at this point, you would see a lot of pictures of what that looks like. Um, we're very used to that here in Florida. However, uh, keep in mind that in addition to what we're used to, these storms will increase in strength and frequency. So if anything, if you keep that in mind. So we're looking at more destruction of property and a limited insurability. There's other effects as well. We're talking about climate justice. We're talking about impacts on your health and so on. There are opportunities, of course. Number one would be looking into how can we generate jobs? For example, by focusing on, on solar energy, how can we deploy new technologies? And then, you know, not only switching to renewables, but how can we ourselves become more efficient? And I already mentioned, you know, lighting, if we switch to LED lighting, then of course, we can become, uh, more, more energy, um, conserving. Uh, keep that in mind. The cost of being unprepared will be immense and irreversible. There's, uh, the back insurers have, um, extremely sophisticated models that show, uh, the risk here. Over the next few slides, you see some of the opportunities that I see for Pembroke Pines. Hopefully that analysis has been made in the past, but I really urge you to revisit that. Mind you, I'm not, I used to work on these things. I, I created the Sustainability Action Plan for the city of Fort Lauderdale, but that was, uh, ten years ago or so. Um, these are typically your, your top priorities, uh, within a city to focus on, right? We're going back to renewables. We wanna be more efficient. And we, of course, wanna also look at sustainable community planning, right? Where are our green fields? Where do we have opportunities to, to really mitigate the impacts of climate change? So unfortunately, I don't have time to go through this. I put the references in here and I, I really recommend that you take a closer look at this. Most of, uh, the cities or companies that are now engaged in this are looking at climate goals or science-based, uh, targets at a fifty percent reduction within the next ten years. Fifty percent reduction in greenhouse gases within the next ten years. If we are not accomplishing that, and this is in line, by the way, with President Biden's plan, then the damages from climate change will be irreversible. And that too is a fact. So what I think the city should look into is create a citizen workshop to really look into climate change resiliency planning. How can you reach out to other municipalities and work with them as well? There's a lot great work being done. How can you create a budget? Uh, there's a lot of grants coming out now with President Biden's new initiatives. I recommend highly to hire a sustainability manager, create a, or update your greenhouse gas inventory, and then also create a climate action plan that has these ten-year and long-term years. And that's it. Much more to say, but that's all I can say today.
Thank you, Doctor. Any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo, question?
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Dr. Nagor. It was a pleasure to appoint you to the Environmental Board and, uh, your background is, uh, is clearly understandable based on your, your, your presentation today, which was crisp and straightforward. I have two questions, um, and I'm not sure, Dr. Nagor, whether you have any information or perhaps the city manager has the answers or can get the answers. The first thing is that we are a part of the PACE program. And for those that have forgotten, PACE is the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, where people can use their, um, uh, property assessment as a financing tool that allows the, uh, financing of, uh, certain allowed improvements. Uh, solar panels are one of them. And, um, uh, uh, there are other, uh, improvements, such as, uh, you know, certain types of roof repairs, not, or roof changes, not all of them, but also, um, a window, uh, change outs, anything that conserves energy, um, that is on the list, the PACE program will allow it. Uh, we've, I don't know, Mayor, if you remember how long ago we authorized that. I'm thinking it was like four, five years ago? Six years ago. I was just saying, six years ago. So, so I think it would be a good time to get a, a, uh, report. Uh, how many people in Pembroke Pines have used the PACE program? You know, um, what, what, I, I would love to get some input, input from them about what their experience was using it. Um, um, and then I, and the, and the second part of my question is, uh, because a, a lot of folks don't get solar panels, for example, because of, of payoff issues. In other words, yeah, how long does it take to get a payback on an investment like that? And we should be able to come up with models, something of a toolkit for residents that will inform them. Look, if you, if you were to put in a, a, a solar panel, here's the average cost for an installation on a South Florida home. Here's, if, if, if this was your, if X, Y, or Z, give them three scenarios, was your bill, this is how long it would take for you to, uh, recoup your investment. And this is how long it would take before your investment started making money for you. Uh, I don't know that we're promoting that, uh, uh, in any particular way. That would be a great article, for example, in the newspaper that we put out. It would be a great addition to the website. Uh, we could, we could encourage residents to, uh, go in that direction, uh, more, um, uh, in a, in a, in a much more, uh, efficient way. Uh, Mr. Dodge, is there anything along those lines that, that you can share with us?
Mr. Dodge?
We do not keep the, any kind of stats of any of the various PACE programs that are here in the city, but we could reach out to see if we could get that information for you. Uh, I know one source would be maybe the property tax roll, because, uh, the, the, the cost of that is usually added to the tax roll. So
Okay.
we could try to do some research and see.
I would love to see how many people, since, since we authorized the program, have used it. Um, and if, if we could assign staff or maybe some volunteers to come up with a, uh, a satisfaction survey that we could contact those people and say, we're the city of Pembroke Pines, we're interested in the PACE program. We know you have it. Here's some questions about, you know, what your experience was with it, because we'd like to, we'd like to know if, if, if the thing works or if it doesn't work or so forth. How about, Mr. Dodge, the, the, the toolkit kind of thing where we can provide residents with better information about what the payoff is and what, what, what the financial side of, of the, the, the investment is? Because that's really the hangup that people, I hear people have with solar panels.
Well, it's my understanding that the companies that promote these type of programs offer that and share that with the residents, whether or not they pay attention to it
Yeah.
or not, but we certainly can check that out as well.
Could you, could you, could you do me a favor, please, and do us all a favor in the city as well? And, and put together something of an email when you, when you, when you have the opportunity answering those two pieces?
Yes.
Thank you so very much.
And then maybe we could put a workshop together, uh, down the road, Mr. Dodge?
Yes, sir.
And we got, we have to be very careful, because some realtors are talking about some of the programs to, uh, when you put in for solar, you put up your house and it's supposed to reduce everything and it's not doing it. It's doing the opposite of that. So I think we need to just be aware of that.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor, first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, uh, I, I agree with a lot of the conversation. I would also like to add that, uh, Dr. Nagor surely has, um, you know, represented some great talent. And I know that there are other members on that Environmental Board that have great talent and maybe incorporate them in this process as well.
Absolutely.
because, uh, they will probably bring more to us than we would expect. So as we have received tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Dr. Nagor. Great, uh, great presentation and a lot of, a lot of information. Um, I, I remember when we, when we did, um, approve this, remember the companies had to come before us, because they had to first be registered and approved in Tallahassee. And then we had to then choose, you know, choose how many we were going to allow to do business in, in the city of Pembroke Pines. And I remember one of the names was Y-Green and there was, there was a couple others. I don't remember off the top of my head. But I do know, um, Commissioner, that they have that data that you're asking for as far as, um, how long, uh, it takes to recoup your investment, you know, the money back. And they, they do have that. But I think maybe what Mr. Dodge would be able to put together then would be to gather, gather that information from them. And then for us as a city to be able to share that out with our residents. Uh, and hopefully they would, um, pay attention. Um, Dr. Nagor, I do have one question for you. On one of the slides, um, if you could go back, and I think the heading said, uh, surface temperature? Uh, there, that one. I noticed that in nineteen forty, fifty, something in that range, it was not, it, it changed from hot to cooler for a num, good number of years there, then popped up and then went back down again. Is there, was there something that you can, um, share with us that would have happened during that particular time that would have caused? Because I just thought that was sort of odd, because it went against the trend of what was happening.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know what happened there exactly. I mean, the, the difference is still significant as to what we see particularly over the last twenty years. So I couldn't really tell you. That looks like it was, uh, wartime, right? Uh, Second World War. So I'm not sure. I can look into that. That's an interesting question.
Gashra? I don't know what, I don't know what it was. It just seemed like it was odd that right in that period of time, it seemed like there was a, a good number of years where it was enough that it flipped it from
Yeah.
being the positive to a negative kind of a thing. So, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
Doctor. Okay, uh, let's go on. Uh, we have our, uh, now some items to be pulled from the agenda. City clerk?
No items to be pulled, Mayor, but there are but there are two items, two addendums added to the agenda.
Okay. Items at the request of the public?
Yes, Mayor. There are items at the request of the public. There are several that were received in the public comments portal email. And there is one that was submitted by a requester who is here in person to address the commission.
Okay.
Ms. Catalina Velosa?
Hold on one second. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
Now, we got the ones that are on the, they're, they're gonna be read into the record?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
Come on up, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just push your, uh, the microphone there or speak and lower that, please. And you have three minutes right here. Just hit speak. Speak. There you go. Go ahead.
Okay. Wait a minute. Thank you. Okay. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Catalina Velosa and I, I am a resident of Pembroke Pines and resident of Pembroke Falls. So, I'm speaking to you as a concerned citizen of Pembroke Pines and a resident of Pembroke Falls. As you might know, in the last three years, Pembroke Falls has received approval from the city of Pembroke Pines to mitigate the loss of trees in the community through, through tree mitigation plans. The la, the latest of which was approved last January. Neither of those, of these plans has been completed to date. And there is no short-term plan to do so. In addition, there are countless additional trees that have been lost over the years for which there is no mitigation plan. Despite the above, the community through its master board, president of the master board, intends to take down between two hundred and four hundred additional trees to perform needed repairs to the sidewalks of the community. Per the community master board, Pembroke Falls will notify the city of Pembroke Pines of the trees that need to be removed and proceed with the removal and sidewalk repairs, I believe, in May. Here again, there is no short-term plan to replace any tree affected by this action. Since the community has been so delayed with completing the approved mitigation plans, the loss of canopy will only be exacerbated by the new removal and mitigation will likely take many years. The question that I want to pose to you is what can the city of Pembroke Pines do to ensure a faster completion of the old mitigation plan and a faster replacement of the trees that will be affected by the sidewalk repairs? The in, the increase in the canopy coverage of our city is an important ecological and economical goal. Pembroke Pines is a, is a Tree City USA community and part of the National Wildlife Federation. And it is a shame and pity that Pembroke Falls, instead of seeking its canopy increase, is reducing it. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dodge, could you look into that, back with us?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll have, um, Mr. Stam get ahold of her.
Great.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Commissioner Seifel?
If I may. Hi, Ms. Velosa. How are you? Good, good, good. Good to see you again. I, I, I wanted to sort of address a couple of the, and, and I'm, Mr. Stam will get with you a little bit more. But some of the problem, and you're correct on, on, on what you're, a lot of what you have said tonight. But this actual tree mitigation plan between communities, all communities, and the city, started about eight years ago or so, when we started having these kinds of issues, the communities did. I remember sitting at a number of your board meetings and also in, in, uh, your environmental group, your landscaping group, uh, meetings as well, where, where starting way back then. There were plans that were set in place for, uh, plans that would be set up to be spread out over maybe three years or four years, where a few troublesome trees would be taken down, sidewalks would be fixed. Next year, you'd budget for, you know, and it would be a plan. What has, and that's happened several times and without ever the first plan ever being completed, because a number of times what happened was your board members changed. Your board changed. And the new board coming in either wanted to do something different, didn't, didn't wanna do something, wanted to just let it ride for a while, whatever happened. That's how a number of, a number of times in Pembroke Falls specifically, that nothing moved forward because of board changes. And you've just, within this last year, also had a, a, a significant board change, where I, I think every board member is a new board, is a new board member. And, and I've had conversations with them and have talked about do, doing this. And they have to come in and there has to, and we've tried to set up these meetings between city staff, Mr. Stam and, and our arborist and everybody to sit down with you all, as we do with other communities, to develop a plan. But when communities wanna spread it out over so many years, that's when the problems start coming in, because we, we can't complete it with a, a board that wants to have it done. Then you get a new board and then nothing happens or they get more aggressive, which I think is what's happening now. It's very, very aggressive. So I'm, I'm hoping and I will continue to follow up on this, that So I'm, I'm hoping and I will continue to follow up on this, that with, with your new board, and I've had conversations with your new president, uh, on a number of occasions about some of these issues, but that we'll get with city staff and hopefully come up with a shorter-term plan where it can be completed and everything done, sidewalks done, trees done. And that replacement of trees, which has to happen because some of the trees that are there need to go, they do. But we have these approved lists of what can be put in now and they need to follow that. So we can work together to make sure that that, that that happens. And I know, and I have spoken to him, but we will continue to work hard on making sure we get, you know, some of the improvements done that you're talking about and hopefully get a plan over a short period of time that will go from beginning to end and actually get completed before we move on to another, another plan.
All right, so Mr. Stam and our arborist will get, will get to you through Mr. Dodge.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Velosa.
All right, we are now.
Mayor?
Yes, City Clerk?
Mayor, there are three other requests at the public that came into the email.
All right. I was just gonna.
One of them is from Susan, Suzanne Stemler. And she says, in-person Pines government meetings. In light of Governor DeSantis' suspension of all COVID-19 emergency orders on May 3rd effectively, effective immediately, when can we look forward to in-person Pines government meetings again?
I'll just answer that.
There's a message also from Ben Novo. And he is saying that he was present for the WebEx meeting, uh, at the last meeting and he was not sure if the item relating to the Borlov Town Homes project, uh, was rescheduled. He had missed the action on that item. The proposed Borlov Town Homes Project PH 2019-01 on an area of land of the, the west of Encantada. He said he, uh, just wanted to get some information about the commission action on that.
All right.
There was an email from Robert Young and he says.
Mayor? Excuse me, go ahead, uh, City Clerk first.
Robert Young, Officer and Board Member of the Chapel Lake Estates Homeowners Association. And he says, thank you to the commission and administration for moving Resolution 2021-R-07 forward. He says, this is an important issue for the protection of deed-restricted communities with public roads that, and, that have no say in the safety and maintenance of those public streets. He was referring to, uh, the traffic engineering agreement.
I know.
And that was from Mr. Robert Young.
All right, Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you. I would say to the, uh, to the first gentleman who lives in my district that, uh, the Borlov project was withdrawn by the applicant, and we have not seen it yet, uh, come back. So it is, there is currently no project before the city commission yet. Uh, and to Mr. Young, I would say you're welcome. Uh, I look forward to hearing from administration what the response is, uh, about our resolution on, uh, on roads. Um, and I hope that, uh, Mr. Dodge, you and, uh, City Attorney or whoever is appropriate will keep us all equally informed as to what the status of that is. Thanks.
All right, announcement of board and committee appointments, City Clerk?
No announcements, Mayor.
All right, City Attorney, you wanna give us a little?
I do, if you will. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Good evening, Mayor and Commission, welcome to, uh, the chambers. It's nice to be back together again. Um, let, let the, let the record reflect that the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, the city administration and the city staff are acting consistent with the recently enacted Governor's Executive Order Number 121-102, which was signed by the governor on May the 3rd, which essentially changed the way the city commission would act and would perform in the context of public access and meeting in a public forum. There is a physical quorum sitting on the dais this evening, consistent with the directions of the governor, and we're acting in a hybrid fashion where the public has a right of access not just to be physically in the room, as, as was our earlier speaker this evening, but also accessible through a WebEx platform by either dialing in, calling in, or emailing the clerk for the purposes of access. As you know, the city commission has been reading into the record through my, through my, through my voice, actually, the virtual commission meeting script. Tonight's a bit different because each commission member, um, except for Commissioner Schwartz, who is unable to be here this evening, is dialed in, he's on the line and is able to vote and, and take action as appropriate, there's a physical quorum of the commission. Secondarily, there's no locks on the doors, which means for the record that anyone who would choose to be in these chambers would have the absolute right to be here unfettered in the context of access to the commission and to the agenda and to the microphone at the podium. However, because of the notice being published by the city commission through the city clerk's office several days before this evening's meeting and pursuant to state law, local charter requirements under the county charter, there is still a virtual concept and additive to tonight's meeting. As you know, the governor, uh, signed Executive Order 20-52 a year or so ago when the pandemic was declared. He signed Executive Order Number 2194 on April the 27th, extending the statewide emergency for sixty days. However, just days ago, he changed direction and adopted two executive orders, 21-101, which embraced the Senate Bill 2006 and Senate Bill and, and Executive Order 21-102, which is the basis for and the reason for the physical presence this evening of the mayor and commission and professional staff. However, for the purposes of those members of the public who chose to be heard this evening, not physically in these chambers, have an absolute unequivocal and unfettered right to dial in, to call in, to email in, or to WebEx in for the purposes of being heard. And the number to call in for the record for those who are unable or unknowing of the fact that city hall doors are open for this purpose, that phone number is 1-408-418-9388. That's 408-418-9388. For those members of the public with a laptop or a desktop or an iPad who choose to access the website through the WebEx platform, which is a virtual platform, um, you may do so by the following passcode. The access code is 1291607974. That's 1291607974. Members of the public who would choose to submit questions, comments, et cetera, may do so by, by email, uh, in the context of emailing the city clerk as prescribed in the notice of the agenda this evening. Or some folks have actually what's called pre-registered. Mr. Benio, who's sitting to my far left, is on the dais, he will have full access to those members of the public who have otherwise sought, uh, to be part of the meeting through the WebEx platform. Uh, at the time the public input is provided for, whether it be under public comment, which was just offered up by the mayor and the commission, uh, comments which are submitted via email will be read into the record as the clerk did just a few moments ago and the commission was able to respond through the mayor's, uh, uh, authority, so to speak. The public who have pre-registered, however, and have access to meeting via the WebEx platform will be identified and told to un-mute their phone and to comment on the item when as and if they're asked to be heard. The person will be asked to identify themselves by stating their first and their last name and their address, which is not typically required, but because we're in this, this hyper-virtual world right now, uh, it would be helpful to get all that information onto the record. Um, they would then be asked by Mr. Benio, uh, to star through it and raise their hand to speak, and Mr. Benio has an in, in, inevitable way of recognizing who's being asked to be, to, to speak. Now, those members of the public who did not pre-register are also not precluded from being heard this evening, and they also will be identified by their phone number, which would be, for example, 954-849 with four digits. Uh, Mr. Benio would then be able to recognize a phone number, would legally then be able to access the information, provide, if you will, your name and address as well, to the extent that you would seek to be heard during that portion of the meeting as well. Under the city code ordinances, public comment is limited to three minutes. Comments on items before the commission are limited as well. To the extent that the mayor has the prerogative to extend that time to allow a speaker to finish their thoughts or to close out a commentary is in the hands of the mayor, as it has always been. So let it be reflected this evening. That's for those in the outside world who would, uh, seek to verify whether or not this commission is in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order 21-102, let it be said that your city attorney confirms that you are. You're physically here in the room, in a physical quorum. The public has an absolute physical right of access to enter these chambers and has an unfettered right to access the meeting via WebEx, via email and by, by phone call. I appreciate the brief indulgence, Mayor and Commission, but this evening is a bit different than it has been in the past because you are physically in the room and acknowledging the impact and the importance of the Governor's Executive Orders and honoring them, consistent with your obligations as public officials and as elected officials under Chapter 112 of the Florida statutes, which is the ethics that governs you all and the city attorney's office. And for that, Mayor, thank you very much and Commission for the time and the indulgence. Appreciate it.
Thank you, City Attorney. All right, we have consent agenda items one through fifteen. What is your pleasure?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second?
I'd like to pull thirteen, Mayor.
Thirteen by Schwartz.
Yeah, I want to pick six for a question.
Six. All right, what else? All right, if there are none else, I would like to have a motion or a approval for items one, two, three, four, five, uh, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen and fifteen.
Mayor, if you will, if you, if you'll also note that Addendum one and item number sixteen are part of the consent agenda as well.
Okay, uh, do we? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
And move, uh, call roll, please.
There's no.
Excuse me, Mayor, may I ask for a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Siple, a second, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, then we are now on item, uh, six, Commissioner Siple.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the 2021 amendment to the interlocal agreement for distribution of the additional tax on motor fuel and the 2021 amendment to the interlocal agreement for the distribution of the fifth cent additional tax on motor fuel for transit.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Siple.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question, uh, I guess to city manager. Um, on the, on the first page, um, item number three, um, I was just sort of, I didn't quite understand. It said, um, that Pembroke Pines share would be decreasing and it was based upon, um, um, based upon some population numbers. Um, could you explain that a little bit? Because I didn't.
Mr. Dodge?
Didn't quite understand our numbers being down.
Yes, the, uh, distribution of, uh, gas tax is based on an overall, uh, population shift and it's the population in relationship to the entire county. So if, uh, some areas grew at a, uh, a larger, uh, or higher level than our city, then it's really based on that percentage. So we represent a very minor, uh, reduction in the population versus the entire county.
Right, well, I under, I under, I mean, I understood, I knew that it was based, um, you know, on the, on the population and, and what portion of the population we are for the, for the county, but are, do those numbers, do those numbers seem right to you, though?
I cannot verify that. Uh, there are documents that we could review to show.
Yeah.
Uh, what the county uses as to their estimate of population per city as well as the unincorporated areas.
Is that something that, yeah, I mean, obviously it's not, you know, an emergency kind of a thing to be done, but could you do, check that out a little bit and just give us a report on that, those numbers?
We can. I believe the last three years, uh, this amount has gone down a very small percentage amount for the last three years.
Yeah, okay.
So someone has gained a little bit, we lost a little.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion, item six. Call roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're now on item thirteen, Commissioner Schwartz.
Uh, City Attorney, if you could read, please, through the mayor.
Yes, if I can. Hold on a second. Number thirteen, for the record, is a motion to approve the virtual commission meeting minutes of the Wednesday, April the 7th, 2021 Voting Conflict Form 8B. Is attached to Exhibit A, the minutes are from the April 7th meeting, the backup of which is in the green book as well as available online to the general public. That's the item, Mayor and Commission.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll move it, Mayor.
Moved by Commissioner Schwartz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz on item thirteen.
Uh, thank you. Uh, City Attorney, in the backup, uh, there's a letter from the chamber. Could you read that into the record, please?
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, if I may read.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is an email, uh, which I received from Marlene Graham, our City Clerk, from, uh, Ismael Monroy, dated, uh, April the 20th, Tuesday, 2021 at 1:15 PM regarding public comments and references minutes of the 4/7 2021 city commission meeting. The letter reads as follows. Good afternoon. This email comes to you on behalf of the Miramar Pembroke Pines Chamber of Commerce and is being submitted regarding an item that appears in the minutes of the 4/7 2021 city commission meeting. As a letter from the Chamber of Commerce was referenced, the chamber would like to add our comment. Paragraph. Since the submission of the letter in 2018, Commissioner Schwartz has been a supporter and partner of the chamber and its mission. We are thankful to him for his continued support and look forward to continuing a strong partnership with the commissioner and all of the Pembroke Pines leadership. We continue to move forward. It is signed, "Thank you and at your service," by Ismael Monroy Jr., interim president and CEO, CEO of the Miramar Pembroke Pines Chamber of Commerce. And that ends the email, Mr. Mayor and Commission.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Uh, thank you, City Attorney. City Attorney, in the minutes, uh, you had, during that meeting, you had, uh, you had made a legal, uh, determination about city action. Um, I don't, I don't recall seeing that reflected in the minutes, uh, that you found the action taken by the city commission to be lawful, legal and, and also compliant with, um, uh, our charter. Do you recall making those statements? And if so, uh, how did we get it included in the minutes prior to this adoption?
Mr. Mayor, may I respond? Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. To the Commissioner, Commissioner Schwartz, I did make comments on the record at the time of the meeting, indicated that, that we, as a, as a law firm and as your city attorney's office had, had, um, reviewed the documents and materials and provided our legal advice on the record regarding the legitimacy and legality of the actions taken by the commission. And we stated that on the record when asked the question and would restate it now if asked.
Uh, Mayor, if, if there's no objection, I'd like to include the city attorney's, uh, words via transcript to be included in, uh, the minutes.
Without objection? Okay, show, call, show, done. All right? All right, let's, uh, call it, item thirteen, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, then the one, City Attorney. Are the, we, we have that, I'm sorry. Uh, item sixteen, sir. Quasi-digital.
We are in number sixteen. Actually, Mayor and Commission, sixteen was part of the original consent agenda. It was a quasi-digital consent item and as I mentioned during the, your approval mechanism on the record, it was approved as a part of the record of the consent agenda.
Very good.
Not being pulled. So sixteen, I know Mr. Stam has asked a question again. Item sixteen was adopted as part of the consent agenda. It was not pulled by any commissioner or by a member of the public, uh, nor by the applicant's counsel or representative of the applicant, therefore is adopted as a matter of law.
Okay, item seventeen, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. If I may read, number seventeen on first reading is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending ordinance number 789, as amended, which approved a development order for the Pembroke Lakes Regional Center Development of Regional Impact, that's referred to as the DRI, amending the Pembroke Lakes Regional Center DRI to delete a portion of parcel B from the DRI acreage, decreasing commercial development intensity from a million 794,300 to a million 733,718 square feet on the approximate 208-acre parcel of property generally located between Flamingo and Hyattish Roads and between Johnson Street and Pines Boulevard, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for recordation, providing for transmittal to all applicable governmental agencies, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. This is a motion to pass on, first reading, proposed ordinance number 2021-09 on the floor for consideration, Mayor and Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Shall I move?
Moved by Commissioner Siple. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so we're on seventeen, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I, I just have, I, I just have some questions. So probably the first thing that I just want to make certain I understand as we go through this process here is that we are moving, removing, uh, from the DRI, uh, some uses or property that has development. And currently there's 60,000 square feet of commercial space that's part of this, um, DRI and that's what's being removed in terms of the intensity. Um, so I'm, I'm, I, I, um, I can appreciate that and so. Um, so I'm, I'm, I, I, um, I can appreciate that, and so, obviously, we are reducing the intensity of the D R I, and we are, uh, creating new use, I guess, that's what we, we can call that, and we're going from sixty thousand square feet of use to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of use. So I, I just wanted to point that out, that it's almost like a doubling of the intensity as, uh, what's in the original D R I, even though it's not a part of D R I, it's still the same six acres, and then, when you take a look at the fact that it's six point eight acres, it's over, I mean, it's nearly three hundred thousand square feet of potential space to be developed, and, uh, you know, we're going to be moving forward, looking at a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of development, is there anything that would stop, that stops us at one twenty and, and keeps us from going up to three hundred thousand?
Manager? Editor?
On behalf of the responder, we defer to Mr. Stam, uh, who might be able to give you the, 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 the chapter and verse citation, but, um, I, I would defer, and then would like to reflect further upon his comments, if you will, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stam would be able to comment.
Alright, Mr. Stam.
Hi.
Mr. Stam.
Sorry, Mayor.
Sorry. You heard the question by Vice Mayor?
Um, I heard the question by the Vice Mayor, uh, the D R I is a little bit more complicated than that, um, there is existing on the property, the Toys R Us, for example, used to be two hundred thousand square feet, um, the old Petco space, uh, was approximately ninety thousand square feet, there was about three hundred thousand square feet of development on that property, uh, plus or minus, um, already, um, the D R I has a bunch of uses in it, uh, and, and Ms. Calhoun's on the call here, as well as, uh, Mr. Rickards, who can just go into this detail a little bit more, but basically, what they're doing is they're pulling this parcel out, they will be required to rezone the parcel, and then they'll also be required to do a platnot amendment, uh, which will then go before the county, um, amending the plat of the property, so this is the first step, um, taking this particular parcel out of the D R I itself, um, the D R I still has, uh, a lot of square footage left, a lot of uses left, um, I anticipate the commission seeing something with the D R I in the very near future, um, but generally, that, that, that's kind of how it works, um. I, I, I don't know if that answers the question directly, I do know that, as a matter of a future site plan, which will be before the P and Z Board and Commission shortly, uh, the developer, or the, excuse me, the hospital will be proposing a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of new hospital use, um, although that's not before us tonight, tonight is really to take the D R I out, they're going to plan as the demo those, that plus or minus three hundred thousand square feet of development, and then come back for, uh, you know, uh, with a site plan in the future to develop the new hospital.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I don't believe that this is not before us tonight, because we have two other items that we're going to be asked to, uh, to approve, and they are directly related to the questions I'm asking on this item here, so I, uh, I, I do, I do, uh, just have a concern, I, I recognize this, this, this is a first reading, so I will, I will have additional questions for the second reading, but I am a little bit concerned about what I just heard, about three hundred thousand square feet of use, and it's only sixty thousand square feet of use that's being pulled, so I don't, I don't know how you tran, I don't know if there's a transfer of the additional use into other parts of the D R I, which we're not seeing tonight either, so.
No, Commissioner, I'm sorry, let me clarify, I apologize, that, they're pulling the sixty thousand square feet out of the D R I for purposes of, um, let's just say, uh, claimed improvement, so the D R I comes, the D R I basically establishes a certain level of improvement, they're going to be required, when they replat the property or go through the platnot amendment, to then reallocate that square footage for the purposes of traffic and everything else, so, I, I guess, it's not that we're playing kick the can or anything like that, but there is a, there's already existing square footage there that's part of the D R I that has been, let's just use, use the term mitigated for traffic purposes, they're pulling that parcel out, and then they're going to be required to replat the property, and, and again, I would defer to, to Hope, so she can clarify this, but it's, um, it, it's part of the process to pull, to, 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 to take these next steps.
Okay, Ms. Calhoun?
Good evening, thank you, Hope Calhoun, on behalf of the hospital, uh, Vice Mayor, thanks for your question, um, so the D R I process.
Hope, we can't hear you, are you unmuted by chance? Try again, please.
Ms. Calhoun, you, one away.
We're having some difficulty hearing you, counselor.
Can you hear me now?
You can.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, better.
Thank you.
Start again, start again, Ms. Calhoun, we, we lost most of your opening statement, Ms., Ms. Calhoun.
I was so fun in that, okay, good evening, Hope Calhoun. At a public, another public, I, I.
Ms. Calhoun, you're cutting in and out, is there?
Mr. Vice Mayor, it's, it's Mark Rickards, I'm a certified planner with Kimley Horn, but also part of the project team, if you don't mind, I'd be glad to answer that question.
Please.
Um, yes, so the, the balance of the hospital campus was taken out of the D R I as well, it included a portion of parcel F, as well as the, um, part that's platted as the Memorial West plat, to be consistent with that, um, we're taking just the portion of what's known as parcel B, which is the Petco and Toys R Us out of the D R I, and that results in a net change of the D R I of minus sixty thousand and change, it also is a net reduction in trips, um, that makes it consistent with the rest of the hospital campus, and I know the other two items are the other, um, two-thirds of the requests tonight, but i- in order to be consistent with the rest of the campus and also part of the discussion with the mall property owners, this seemed like the best route to take it out of the D R I, um, the only intensity taken out of the D R I is just that Petco and Toys R Us property and the corollary, uh, trips, if that helps explain it, and we do have a presentation that it helps to explain that a little more in terms of exhibits, but let me know if that helps clarify.
Vice Mayor?
So, it actually causes me to have more questions on this one here, so, I mean, to take out the trips here and then, and in the same means with the water and the sewer and the trash, all the other services, you know, you're taking out a little bit, but it's like thinking about what are you putting back into it, and then hearing a little bit more about the, the three hundred thousand square feet of space that's currently existing, you're only taking sixty thousand out, you're leaving it still in that part, parcel, that means you've just increased the intensity of that parcel, because you're taking six point eight acres out, and you're still leaving more in there, so, I mean, for, for, for sake of moving this item, I, I, I'm willing to, uh, to approve this item tonight on first reading, but I do have other questions, and it, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sold on this item, that's all I'm going to say.
Vice Mayor, could you get with Mr. Calhoun and Mr. Rick there?
I, I will get my other questions.
Appreciate it, alright, further questions on item seventeen? Aaron, on call roll, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission number eighteen, on the record, is a motion to pass, proposed ordinance number twenty-one, twenty dash twenty-one dash ten, on first reading, it reads as follows, is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter one fifty-five, which is the.
Please mute, please mute your, all your equipment, everybody, please mute.
Okay. Thank you again.
Everybody's not muted on, on the air, please mute your machines. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, an ordinance of the city Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter one fifty-five, which is the city's comprehensive zoning code of the city Pembroke Pines, by specifically amending section one five five point zero two seven, entitled zoning map, amending the hospital district standards to amend development criteria for the district as a result of hospital campus expansion and updates to the future short and long-term construction program for the approximate forty-three point five acres of hospital property, generally located north of Pines Boulevard, south of Johnson Street, and east of Flamingo Road, as more particularly described in exhibit A, attached to, to, and made a part here of, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally, providing for an effective date, this would be item number eighteen, twenty twenty-one dash ten, uh, ordinance for, on first reading, on the floor for consideration, Mayor and Commission, thank you.
Thank you, motion for item nineteen?
I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner Seiple, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I have.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Questions here as well, too, so, um, I just, it, it, you know, there's a, this is a, a large moving piece, there's a lot of documentation, and, um, actually rather interesting, so, you know, certainly, I received, uh, a lot of, um, a lot of comments from some of the, uh, residents, I guess, that are, that seem to be feeling that they're impacted by this hospital here, and, um, it caused me to kind of just take a little bit of a look, a little bit deeper into, you know, what is it really going on? So, um, there, there, it's clear that, um, the, the, um, the neighborhood across the street on Johnson Street, you know, are concerned about impacts and future impacts, and I, I, I just want to share with the commission that, you know, I, um, I have experienced the, uh, the expansion of hospitals, uh, in, in rather unique different ways, and one of those is, so, I'm corn, I'm kind of like a corn-fed, bred, you know, Hollywood, Pembroke Pines, Floridian type of thing, and in my teens, I used to ride my bike down Johnson Street where you have Memorial Regional, and many of us know Memorial Regional, um, I hate to say it, but, you know, like forty-five so years ago, was just a simple hospital, and over the years, uh, little by little, they expanded, 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 to the point that I still actually have family members that live in that area that are actually quite impacted by that hospital, because now they've built to the point where they're using the neighborhood roads, and I don't mean Johnson Street, I mean the neighborhood roads, like Arthur and, uh, some of those other roads in there, as primary through fares to get to and from the hospital, so those people who live on those, you know, those, on those blocks are substantially impacted, and that hospital has also taken property, um, surrounding them to expand, and then I look at, uh, Memorial West, which is where we're at here, and, you know, truthfully, my kids were built there, were born there, my, my son was born there nearly the first year that this hospital was built.
How long ago was that?
Oh, well, a little, little less than forty-five years. But, um, but I've watched Memorial West grow in a very similar fashion, so I, I can kind of relate a little bit to what that community is sensing about the impacts that could possibly be, maybe not quite like Memorial Regional, but certainly, nevertheless, an impact, so there are two things out of all this stuff that I read through, that seems to be the primary issue for, uh, the, the, call it the adjoining neighborhood, you know, one is, you know, the, the height of these buildings, and certainly, they've made several requests to kind of rescind what was done in two thousand sixteen, which went to creating the hospital district in the first place, which allowed some of those buildings to have, um, elevated heights, and it was because of the cancer center that was very important, and we all know we need that, and I'm, and I agree to that, too, um, the other issue was access to Johnson Street, and so, um, I have a, a really kind of good understanding of that, because I have a very similar, uh, situation where, within the District One, on Seventy-second Avenue, that abuts Rar College, there's that same concern about dumping a lot of extra traffic onto Seventy-second Avenue, so I could see that reason for Johnson Street, so, in, 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 in the review of all this stuff, I said, uh, I, I, I'm okay, I, I, I'm, I'm not in, in a bad place with this, but I do want to make certain that, uh, the community doesn't get impacted, even well beyond our leaving, so, um, I still have some questions about the height, um, and, and, you know, uh, the, uh, the requests are made by the community about kind of rescinding the height, um, of that go along Johnson Street, but, but it, existing, I don't know that there is any height along Johnson Street at this point, even though it was approved, you know, but still, the height is there, and that means the, the, the hospital has the access to that right, the other thing is, so, I, 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 I will have more conversation about what, what does that mean, what can be done going back to two thousand sixteen, you know, is there a sense to rescind, is, you know, is that something that we talk to the hospital district, I, I don't know, the other thing is about the, uh, the access to John, um, to Johnson Street, and so, and here, it makes it very clear in Johnson Street, that, um, it requires a supermajority, a four-fifth vote of the city commission in order to be able to have any access to that, so, um, I, uh, it was a little late, by the time I got to, to read all this, I finally realized that I needed to take a look at the ordinance eighteen fifty-six, which was done in two thousand sixteen, so I read through eighteen fifty-six, and there's a slight difference in, in eighteen fifty-six and this language that's before us today in regards to Johnson Street, um, and I, I just don't know, maybe because eighteen fifty-six was an ordinance, um, that ordinance would have had to come before this commission to be changed or to modify, be bona fide, is that correct?
City Attorney?
If I may respond to the Vice Mayor, the answer is he is correct, if there's an ordinance before the commission requires you to, um, consider it, modify it, approve it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Hold on, we took, and it was a four-fifth, uh, the issue is a four-fifth, if anything, uh, for approval for any increase in Johnson Street, who was asking?
That's Mike Stam, can I jump in for a moment, sir?
Can you lower your, can you lower your, uh, uh, sound system, please?
I, I have, I am, is this better, sir?
No. Alright, go ahead.
Mayor, the ordinance has a, an error in it, it's important to read the backup that comes along with the ordinance, the commission during second reading modified the ordinance and amended the height of the buildings along Johnson Street, um, as well as the four-fifths item, that happened during second reading and adoption, so the ordinance itself has had an error, because it referenced the P and Z recommendation, not the actual action of the commission, which was included as part of the motion at the end, the new ordinance, which is before you tonight, clarifies all of those items, and puts them within the whereas clauses, all the items that were adopted on the twenty sixteen, which were in effect negotiated between the commission and the petitioner with a lot of public input at the time, so I hope that clarifies, again, if you go into the actual attachment, there was the motions and the votes by the commission on each one of those amendments, um, which was part of the ordinance, just not clarified whereas clauses.
Hey, Vice Mayor?
Okay, so that's, uh, again questionable, because I thought I read all the information, and, and I did receive, um, information from the city clerk today that provided me eighteen fifty-six, and, and Mr. Stam is correct, in the sense that what I'm reading in the ordinance was that there was no four-fifths, it was strictly prohibited to have access, I read the, uh, the, the, what I believe is the minutes of the, well, let's see here, which is, let's see, the explanation in the black line, and, and I didn't see anything in there either that made reference to that, so I, I, I guess then I'm, I'm absent of additional information here that would clarify that there was a change to this, this ordinance in the first place.
Mr. Stam?
Um, Mayor, if I can, in the, in the backup, um, in the staff report that's attached to this item, we clarified, staff went back and watched the video, there was a motion on the table, and, um, Commissioner Seiple, I don't know if you remember this, you actually on the table and Commissioner Siple, I don't know if you remember this, you actually made a motion to make it a unanimous vote to move this item forward. And then the commission, I believe it was Commissioner Castillo, said that it was a very serious item. We don't have very many unanimous votes in here. And again, I'm paraphrasing, but a four-fifths vote would be for the Johnson item. Uh, we went back and we watched the video link. Um, there are some substitute motions at the beginning of the explanation in detail earlier on in the item. Um, I can share some of that on my screen if you give me a moment.
Good evening. While Mike is doing that.
Yeah, go ahead.
May I, thank you. Just very quickly while Mike is, uh, looking at that and pulling it up. Um, Vice Mayor, I know in the ordinance that's before you tonight, um, it clarifies, and I think this is what Mr. Stam is alluding to. Um, and there are, just very quickly, uh, page two of the proposed ordinance, I think outlines the issues that you are concerned, you are mentioning, um, two of five of ordinance twenty twash, twenty twenty-one dash ten. Um, and it speaks to the height of the cancer center. It speaks to Johnson Street access and how that access cannot be changed. And I want to just point out, you know, again, we do have a full presentation I'm prepared to go through, but the items that are before the commission tonight, the items that went to planning and zoning board specifically do not address, that's the way to say it. We don't impact Johnson Street is a simple way to say it. Um, what we're proposing only has to do with the Petco and Toys R Us parcels. Um, there are no changes proposed in the HD guidelines that impact Johnson Street in any way. And in our meetings with all of the homeowner associations, we made that abundantly clear. And, and with regard to the correspondence received with regards to tonight's items, that was kind of the overarching, uh, comment and concern about our impact on Johnson Street. And we are not in any way. As a matter of fact, the hospital went through extreme lengths to, to acquire these two parcels, the Petco and the Toys R Us parcels, specifically with the residents in mind, so that they would not be impacted by, um, the expansion. And, um, so what we're asking again, everything we're asking for is to the newly acquired property south of the existing campus. And I just want to make that very, very clear. Um, because again, we recognize how important that was.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. And, and thank you, Ms. Calhoun. There's, I, I have no doubt about your integrity and the honesty of what you speak to. And that's not what my referencing at this point is. This is dealing with something that's, uh, a record that, um, as you are, you know, legally inclined, you will understand that somebody will use this later to, uh, to an advantage. And so that's all I'm addressing at this point here. I'm, I'm not questioning at all where, where you're coming from or, you know, for you or for, for your client. I, I, I just, I want to, I want to have a better understanding because listen, it's a different, there's a different feeling as if it's prohibited or if it's a four-fifth vote to me. Again, I, I, I background this with recognizing the expansion that occurred over these many years with Memorial Regional. I expressed what I've seen, the expansion, uh, you know, since this hospital, Memorial West. So long as these issues are still outstanding, it, it's not being acted on today. It may not be acted on next year. But at some point in time, so long as they exist, somebody is going to take advantage of that. And that's the only concern that I have is, you know, how do you just protect the community? That's all. Nothing more. You want to go build towards, uh, uh, Pines Boulevard and, you know, we'll, you know, we'll deal with that issue a, as it comes because it's not a direct impact to a, to a living community. Um, so I, I, I do want to say that, uh, Mr. Stam, if you, if you found that information and you wanted to share a screen, I, I'd be interested to see that because, uh, the records that I'm looking at does not demonstrate what you've expressed as an error.
The, again, I'm trying not to be loud here. I apologize. I'm a mile away from my computer here. Um, the mo, there was a motion to amend later in the agenda item, which failed. That's what, again, I'm, I'm going back to what I watched in the video. Commissioner Siple made a motion to amend to have a unanimous vote for the opening of Johnson Street. Again, in that motion failed, Commissioner Castillo made a substitute motion to a four-fifths vote, uh, to do that. I apologize. I know that is not clear in the verbatim. Um, staff went through many, many hours watching the video to make sure things were there. And again, that's why we've clarified even further in this current ordinance through the whereas clauses and also through the document itself about the four-fifth vote. I'm trying to find it within the HD guidelines because that four-fifth vote was listed in the HD guidelines themselves. I'm looking for it right now, sir.
So, uh, for, for sake of, uh, time, I don't wish to consume everybody's time here. Uh, this is a rather very important issue to me, um, recognizing the rights that are going to be yielded or not yielded for a community. So at this point, uh, again, I will, um, I will yield to a, to a, uh, affirmative vote on this item. I will look to get that additional information. And again, I'm not sold on this item. So I, I, I will move this forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Siple?
Thank you, thank you. And, um, to my colleague, I, I appreciate, um, your comments and I appreciate your, you know, your delving into, um, issues as you have, as you have always done, um, to get the answers that you need in order to, um, take your vote and, and take your stance and what have you. So I, I do appreciate that. Um, I just, I did just want to say, and I think we all probably all got, um, texts or emails from, from a few residents, um, mainly from Flamingo Villas. Um, I don't think I got any from, um, Pier Point or Colony Point, um, that were, that were, um, questioning or, or had any, had any issues. Um, and, and again, I just want to say that this has been, um, I, I've dealt with those communities with Memorial, I think probably since my first day in office, um, with issues that have come up. And we, we really, uh, we really have worked hard, um, uh, to make sure that we found that good balance between an overall community need of a fabulous hospital and yet, uh, protecting those residents that are in the businesses that are right, you know, uh, around there, mainly the residents that are there. And we've gone through, um, uh, many different events that have happened there, uh, uh, projects that have come forward. Uh, we ended up recently, um, uh, you all, we approved having a hospital district, which was really a, a bright idea that, that, um, because hospital requirements are so unique to any other type of development that it was, it was really a good thing to, to be able to have that kind of language and that district set up for that. And it's worked, it's worked well. Um, in this particular, in this particular case, um, as we have done in, in other, which other big projects that have come there, uh, some expansion, the teaching, the school teaching, the, um, the, the new, um, parking garage, which were the last projects before this came forward. We did the same thing that we did this time, which was to have presentations with each of those three communities, not just the, uh, it was not open to just the board members. It was open to, and we had quite a, quite a few that were just the residents that wanted to know what was going on and, and ask their questions and get their information, um, directly from, um, Ms. Calhoun and her team. Mr. Greenspan and Mr. Rickards were, were, were there. Um, and actually this last time, um, gave, uh, uh, a big PowerPoint. And I, I don't know, um, Vice Mayor, if you were able to see that, but maybe that might also be something that, um, perhaps Ms. Calhoun could forward, you know, to you and to all of us, to all of you here. I'd like all my colleagues to be able to see that as well because I think some, um, questions might be, of your questions might be answered in some of that. Um, the, the, so we've had these three, these, we've had these three meetings with these individual communities. And we did it through, through Zoom. So we had pretty good attendance at each, at, really at each one of them. There were questions that were asked. There were questions that were answered. And I agree with you, the, the, the over, the overriding concerns were that, um, Johnson Street be Johnson Street and, um, building height. And again, um, it has been stated, and, and there was even a letter that I shared with, that came from Ms. Calhoun, that I shared with, um, all of those residents with their boards and asked them to share out, where in fact, um, she discussed that in, in her letter, um, about the Johnson Street and about the building. The big discussion originally came up about building height was because at, not this go-around, but the previous go-around, there was some talk of the current cancer center. Remember now, this was going on because they were not able to, although they had tried many times, the hospital had not been able to purchase any other property. The Petco and, and the gentleman that owned it wasn't in the selling mood. And so that, that, that wasn't happening. But unfortunately, unfortunately, the need in the community for more cancer treatment space was continuing to grow. And so they were then coming forward to say, how can we, how can we expand something on the, on the cancer? How can we also talk about, um, a, a, a parking garage? They were looking originally at the possibility of a parking garage on the northwest corner. They were talking originally about where the current cancer center is, expanding that and having to go higher because of the footprint that was available, because no land was available. Because of the, um, and that's where we learned you can't say stories, you have to say feet because the radiation treatment equipment doesn't just fit in an eight sto, an eight foot or ten foot, it's twenty, thirty, forty feet. So you have to talk feet, not stories when you're doing that. In the meantime, in the meantime, this land came available. And in the meantime, they nixed the idea of building again because the residents were not, uh, not enthusiastic at all about having a parking garage on the corner there. So they built the parking garage next to the existing parking garage on the south, on the south part of it. The cancer, uh, like I say, unfortunately, the need for more, uh, treatment, uh, capability continues to grow, um, a, a lot. So when this property became available, it's my understanding that they jumped on it and got it with the sole intention of being able to move that, that cancer treatment portion to this new, uh, new purchase and be able to do it in the right way, in far enough ways from the residential part, uh, uh, and sightlines that there would, it, there, there would be no issue with, with height even for what they were looking for because it just was too far away.
Right.
So all the residents were, um, were very much, uh, in, in favor and spoke that not, this recently when we had these three meetings, that they were very much, uh, in favor of that. They were glad that they had this in the community. They understood the need for it. And they were very happy with, with, um, you know, what was, what was going on. Um, you mentioned, and, and I'm a Hollywood girl. I was born in Hollywood, so I know, know Hollywood very, very well. Um, you mentioned also, um, how Regional has just grown, you know, crazy, Memorial Regional, and how it has affected the community there. And, and don't take this, don't take this in the wrong way. I am still advocating for the residents. And I'm also still advocating for Memorial Hospital to find that happy medium where we can all be happy. However, I do have to bring, bring to attention that Memorial Regional, the community surrounding Memorial Regional is and was very, very different than the communities we have here at Memorial West. For example, Memorial Regional started buying up individual homes because it was surrounded by individual homes. And that's, and you said even some were taken, which could happen on an individual home. Where we're looking at these three residential communities, you'd have to take like the whole community. I mean, so it makes, not that that's a reason to support this or not support it, but it does shed a different light to the capability of what may, what may, may happen. Um, the more logical would be, again, if Memorial still needed more ex, expansion, that they would still continue to look at available properties on that campus, uh, the, the mall campus, if, if you call it, if you call it that. Um, so while I absolutely, again, want to say, and I, you know, have always, have always stood by the residents and have always been right there with the residents on, on, uh, you know, on their concerns and, and, and helping them with their voicing their concerns about it, I do still also support the hospital because I, I mean, we all know that we, that we need it. We, we need it. We just have to continue working together to find that happy medium where it works for everybody. And, and I, I don't, what's before us tonight is very specific issue, very specific request. And, and I understand, Vice Mayor, where you're coming from when you're saying, we have these issues before us tonight, but in the future, something else may happen. Well, that can always be said about pretty much anything that, that, that we do up here. And that can't necessarily be a factor to not support something that's, that's good. When, when I made the motion some time back that if there were to be changes to Johnson Street that it would need a unanimous vote, I thought that was a good move. And that was, that was very reassuring to the residents at the time. Unfortunately, we didn't get that. We got a four-fifth, which is still pretty, pretty darn good. I would have preferred the, the, the five oh vote on it. And maybe we'll address that again at some other point as a means to provide, um, a sense of security to those homeowners in those three, in those three communities going, going forward. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that, um, that Ms. Calhoun and, and, uh, can share with, with my colleagues more information, the PowerPoints, and maybe even the letter that, that was sent out that, that might answer some more. And, and to have individual conversations with you all to answer those questions because I think it is such a community-wide important issue that we need to get it right. We need to get it right for residents and we need to get it right for, for the hospital. So, um, thank you. Uh, thank you for listening to my, to my concerns about it. I appreciate yours, Vice Mayor. Always good points that you bring forward. But we're going to keep working until we get to the right answer. But tonight is only specifically for what they're looking for at the Petco, uh, Toys R Us portion. We can maybe bring up other items later to deal with the other issues that we're talking about.
Further discussion, item eighty?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I see Hope, uh, sorry.
Hope, raise your hand.
Hope, did you, did you want to say something, Ms. Calhoun?
If I can, can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor, I believe you were asking about the, uh, the, the prior iteration of the HD guidelines and the languages in there. And I know Mr. Stam is looking for that. But I can tell you specifically with regard to, again, building heights and the access on Johnson Street, page twenty-five of the guidelines that are before you tonight specifically state, um, I'm, I'm going to read it to you verbatim. It says, "No current access from the hospital campus to Johnson Street is permitted and future access to Johnson Street is prohibited unless approved by a supermajority, which is four fifths of the city commission." So that addresses that. And Commissioner Siple, if I, if I may, and I know, Mayor, you have a long agenda you'd like to get through, but we do have a presentation which I think will answer some questions. I can go through it now as quickly as possible, or we can have a separate meeting, whichever you prefer. But in either event, I would like to ask that we go forward tonight. And I'm happy to answer as, provide as much information as needed again, either tonight or at your discretion at a later time.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
I'd like to move the question.
Okay. Questions removed. City Clerk Colville.
Mayor, sorry, just, we have a, a public speaker. Mark, I'm sorry, go ahead. Greenspan.
Who's that?
Mark Greenspan.
Hey, Mark. Go ahead. You have three minutes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I know Ms. Calvin was, was attempting to get your, um, your attention relative to the presentation that we have, but, uh, she, she was able to get in and ask it. So, um, I, I withdraw my, my request to speak.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk Colville.
Sir, Mayor, before we call the roll, may I just make a one last comment?
Okay.
So I, I just want to make it clear. I'm, I'm not necessarily against the project. It was very actually, uh, important for me to hear what, um, Commissioner Siple had to say because this, she is, she does represent that district. And I can tell you that through my this, she is, she does represent that district, and I can tell you that through my research, you know, it was very clear that you were well involved, ensuring that there was a, a good outcome. And that's all I'm looking for as well, I'm on the same page about harmonizing uses, and that's why I'm only bringing some of these things up. I have information that was provided to me, doesn't seem to be gelled yet, I mean, I, I hear very clearly, Ms. Calvin, what you read to me, I must have read it about 25 times in several different documents, I, I understand that. But I, I do still would like for staff to provide me with that connection piece between what was, you know, prohibited to a forfeits vote. I don't, I don't have that, and that's very, very necessary.
That's cutting, didn't she just tell that? Didn't she just read that?
It's not prohibitive, it's a forfeits vote.
All right, you heard what the Vice Mayor needs, the manager?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to make, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure that there are any public speakers, I know there may be some on the line or otherwise.
Are we done? All done.
Mr. Stam, do you have any other public speakers that you were advised of?
Mr. Stam?
I'm hoping my voice is lower now, I connected through my phone, is that lower?
Yeah, that's good. Do you have any more speakers?
I do not have any speakers, sir, but we do have public comments that were submitted via like, via email. I do know that the commission has seen most of these comments, as they were copied, but there were public comments specifically for this item that were submitted via email.
City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing this to be put on the record, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stam.
We have an email from Priscilla. She says, hello, how am I able to participate? Oh, actually, she's asking about participating on the, on the WebEx regarding the Pembroke Lakes Regional Center development. But another email came in from Patricia Malinowski, to whom it may concern. This email is being sent to make sure that any approval for expanding Memorial Hospital on Johnson Street and Flamingo Road should include the rescinding approval for any buildings over two stories, two stores along Johnson Street. The residents in Flamingo Villas do not want the hospital buildings to encroach along residential Johnson Street and the surrounding neighborhoods. Please remove the previous approval for the four-story building now that the cancer center is being moved to the Toys R Us parcel. Your assistance is greatly appreciated in getting the prior approval rescinded for a four-story building. Please confirm receipt of this email and an update regarding the status. That was Patricia Malinowski. Maria Lopez, note that any approval for expanding the hospital district should include rescinding for any building over two stories along Johnson Street. I'm a homeowner of, at Flamingo Villas. That was from Maria Lopez. An email from Patricia Metcalf, she says, "As a homeowner in Flamingo Villas since 1983, I have seen the massive growth of Memorial West. When they built, built the first hospital, we were promised that it would remain a two-story building. You can see how that promise was kept. Next, they started seeking approval for other buildings. We were promised that they would be one story. Soon, they wanted our approval to start adding several stories to the cancer center. They claimed this was vital, and there were no other options, even though I personally suggested other locations. While our association withdrew our objections, we were not happy. We have continually been bombarded with horrible ideas from the hospital for giant parking garages on the corner of Johnson Street and Flamingo, and exit entrance roads directly across from us. Now the hospital has finally purchased the Toys R Us pet supermarket buildings on the corner of Pines and Flamingo. This is great. Now they should be building on the site, on this site, and leaving Flamingo Villas alone. There is no reason to expand the cancer center building that is directly in front of Flamingo Villas. Please, before allowing any new building, you rescind your approval to increase the cancer center to four stories. Sincerely, Patricia Metcalf." Manuel Castillo sends the next message. "Moving the cancer center to Toys R Us parcel eliminates the need and approval can be rescinded as part of the hospital resigning. Sincerely, Manuel Castillo." The next message is from Carlos Mendez. "Dear Representative, I understand that Memorial West, that Memorial West is requiring approval for adding the old Toys R Us and Petco parcels located at the Pines and Flamingo intersection as part of the Memorial West Hospital expansion. A few years ago, Memorial West asked the City of Pembroke Pines access to the Johnson Street corridor that is on the perimeter of Memorial West's property. Memorial West Hospital, when requested, a zoning change claiming that the hospital needed to build a structure up to four stories high to house the hospital's nuclear equipment. Fast forward to today, and Memorial West is now requesting city approval for the addition of the old Toys R Us and Petco parcels as part of their campus. As a resident of Flamingo Villas, I feel that it is only fair that any approval for the Toys R Us and Petco parcels should include rescinding approval for any new construction of buildings over two stories along the Johnson Street corridor by Memorial West Hospital. The addition of these parcels add an area much greater than the area previously proposed by Memorial West Hospital to house the hospital's nuclear treatment center. The addition of these new parcels to Memorial West's campus now offers more than ample space to accommodate the requirements of Memorial West Hospital's nuclear equipment. I'm writing to you to request that the previous zoning approval of the Johnson corridor covering the Flamingo Villas and Pier Point be rescinded, as construction of four-story structure is no longer needed once the Toys R Us and Petco parcels are added as part of Memorial West campus. As the addition of these parcels would offer Memorial West more than ample area to cover the hospital's expansion and accommodate the hospital's nuclear treatment center. We welcome Memorial West to our community, but we also want to maintain the privacy of the community we live in and have a separation between the residential and hospital areas. I feel certain that should any representative or hospital management be faced with similar circumstances, they would feel the same way as we residents feel about our community's privacy, and would request that the previous Johnson Street corridor surrounding the Memorial West hospital zoning law be rescinded. Thank you, Carlos Mendez, Flamingo Villas resident." The next message is from Debbie Alley. She says, "The residents of Flamingo Villas have always supported our community hospital and the cancer center. It's a vital part of the community. Your proposal to move the cancer center to the Toys R Us parcel is a good idea. The rezoning of the hospital district, moving the cancer center to the Toys R Us parcel eliminates the need for the expansion of the existing cancer, cancer center building to four stories. As you remember, Flamingo Villas and Pier Point were very much against the changes that would bring along Johnson Street and our residential community's quality of life. This is the perfect time to show your good faith with the community by rescinding the now unnecessary variance for extra height granted to the cancer center building on Johnson Street previously. Thank you, Debbie Alley, President, Flamingo Villas Homeowners Association." The next message is from Gail Jackson. Gail writes, "I've been a resident at Flamingo Villas here in Pembroke Pines since 1984. I've been to many meetings over the years to speak to the fact that myself and many other residents living here have advocated to maintain our street slash area as a residential area. We are adamant that this area does not become overbuilt, as has happened to Memorial Regional Hospital's surrounding areas. I have learned recently that the cancer center from Memorial West will now be relocated to the south side of the hospital where Toys R Us and Petco used to be located. This is wonderful news. However, I want to, wanted to be sure, after all the previous discussions on the first location of the cancer center across from us here in Flamingo Villas and Pier Point, that building heights be rescinded from the former approval for a four-story building, now that it will be relocated. Prior to the former discussions of the need to raise the building's height due to equipment limitations, we were led to believe that we would never have a building higher than a two-story one across from our location. If Memorial West continues to expand, I'm advocating it be understood that we do not want any Johnson Street buildings to encroach on our neighborhood, so it can be maintained as a residential area and permanently maintain lower building heights. Most sincerely, Ms. Gail P. Jackson." The next message is from Doris Cook, who writes, "While I approve the new expansion of Memorial West moving, Memorial West move of the cancer center to the Toys R Us parcel, I will expect the rescinding for any buildings over two stories along Johnson Street. Thank you for your time and attention. Doris Cook, Flamingo Villas." The next email is from Monica Merchan. "Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, I'm writing this email to request that the upcoming vote for approval for expanding the hospital district must include rescinding approval of any buildings over two stories along Johnson Street. We initially opposed to the zoning change. As a Flamingo Villas homeowner, having any type of high building on the corner of Flamingo and Johnson invades our privacy, because it will overlook the pool and even our homes. The hospital claimed they would, they could not move the cancer center, and we agreed, but now they're requesting moving to the Toys R Us and Petco area, which is the best solution for everyone. Our issue is that they also have the commission's approval for a four-story building, and it's only, it's only fair to the residents that this approval is rescinded, since it is no longer needed. Having buildings over two stories along Johnson Street violates our privacy, which has always been our major concern. We trust you and know that you always do what's best for your constituents. Best regards, Monica Merchan and Carlos Rojas, Flamingo Villas." The next message is from Suzanne Stemler. She writes, "As a 21-year homeowner in Flamingo Villas, I'm especially concerned that Memorial Hospital West honor its original promise for a building no higher than one story on the side of the current cancer center along Johnson Street. Several years ago, Memorial was granted a variance allowing a four-story expansion of the cancer center, but since the center is relocating to the former Toys R Us property, that variance is no longer necessary. The variance should be rescinded, and Memorial should honor its original promise, no higher than one story along Johnson Street. Those of us living along Johnson Street value our peace, our peaceful and aesthetically pleasing neighborhood, and always felt any multi-story building along Johnson Street a serious intrusion. However, we recognized the benefit the center provided and agreed not to fight the proposed four-story extension overlooking our homes. Now we no longer need the multi-story cancer center in that location, nor do we want any other multi-story structure overlooking our homes, negatively impacting our quality of life and reducing our property values. Pembroke Pines Commission, please rescind the variance for the four-story cancer center or any other multi-story building along Johnson Street. Suzanne Stemler, Flamingo Villas." Sonia Richelson, and her message says, "Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, first, I want to say that the website where residents are supposed to look up public announcements is impossible to search. Every effort should be made to improve this website, so residents of Pembroke Pines can get accurate information on publicly noted announcements using the numbers posted. I'm sure that the website is not in compliance. Second, at the meeting today, raised the expansion of the Memorial Hospital complex. Please make sure that any approval for expanding the Pembroke Pines Memorial Hospital district on Flamingo Road include rescinding approval for any buildings over two stories along Johnson Street. Flamingo Villas residents do not want the, the hospital buildings to encroach along residential Johnson Street and its neighborhoods. This will most definitely impact the value of our homes. It was only approved because the hospital insisted they needed this building for the cancer center. This is the perfect time to remove the approval of the four-story building now that the cancer center is being moved to, over by Toys R Us. Thank you, Sonia and Eugene R. Richelson." And the last email message here is from Sarah Garmin. "Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, first, I want to say that the website," it looks as if this is identical to the previous email that I just read, word for word, but this message is from Sarah Garmin, and she expresses the exact same views as the email that was just read. And she thanks the commission, Sarah Garmin, 12338 Northwest 11 Court, Pembroke Pines. Thank you, that was the final one.
Further discussion. All right, let's call a roll on item 18, please.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. The second and final hearing on item number 17, 18, and 18 will be conducted in these chambers on or about June the 2nd. Next up is item number 19, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, read it, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 19 is motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2021-11 on first reading, which is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 155 of the city's comprehensive zoning code by specifically amending section 155.027 entitled zoning map to rezone the approximate 6.8 acre parcel of land generally located north of Pines Boulevard and east of Flamingo Road, and where particularly described in exhibit A made a part of this ordinance. Rezoning from the current zoning of B3, which is referred to as general business, to HD, known as hospital district, and providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Number 19 for the record, Mayor and Commissioners, proposed 2021-11, proposed ordinance on first reading on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
The motion?
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Seiple, second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Castillo, discussion. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Again, Ms. Mayor and Commissioner, the item will be conducted for public review further
in a public hearing on or about June the 2nd.
Thank you, City Attorney, item 20, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number 20 is...
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun, thank you.
Item number 20 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2021R12, which is a resolution of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, the city clerk, and the finance director to sign vouchers and checks to make deposits and withdrawals, and authorize transactions on investments pursuant to the city's investment policy ordinance, and as provided for by law. Providing for conflicts, severability, and finally, providing for an effective date, 2021R12 on the floor, Mayor, thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Seiple?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor, discussion. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, number for the record is 3741 on item number 20, next up is 21.
Please read it.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, number 21 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2021R15, which is in fact a resolution of the city commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the City of Pembroke Pines to join with the state of Florida and other local governmental units as a participant in the Florida memorandum of understanding and formal agreements implementing a united, a unified plan, directing the city clerk to provide a copy of this resolution to the Florida League of Cities and to the Florida Attorney General, authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to effect to with the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Number 21, thank you, Mayor.
Moved by Commissioner Seiple?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor, discussion.
Mayor, I have one question.
Quickly?
Very quickly to, to the city attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
On page, on the second page, if you go down to item number seven, it starts out with Attorney General Moody has indicated in order to maximize the settlements for those jurisdictions which participate in this proposal, she would seek an injunction and legislation preventing those who did not participate in this settlement from filing a future claim. My question to you, city attorney, is that as clear or correct as it seems to be on reading?
Mayors, by Mayor?
Please.
It seems to be, the difference for the record, however, is this city was a participant as a plaintiff in the federal court system in Ohio. I'm not sure how this really impacts the non-cities. There are some that are non-city applicants, some cities have not even chosen to join in the litigation, which is a, you know, their, their approach. Secondarily, through the mayor, to the, to the commissioner, as you know, in our memorandum at the last meeting and in the backup, the attorney's fee issue has been segregated from the main claim, because the city was first in in the concept. We do not have to degrade or diminish our, our payment over the next 18 years with, with attorney's fees. And lastly, the, as you know, there was a bill pending in the legislature this session, I'm not sure it actually passed, I think it failed, actually, which would have allowed the AG to take all of your rights further away by litigating on your behalf without your consent. That's, that did not pass, it was tabled indefinitely, and... It was tabled indefinitely, and this provision may be moot, as the case may be, given the nature of that legislation.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then number is 3742 for the record, Mr. Mayor.
Addendum two, sir.
Thank you, if I may. This is addendum number two to the city commission agenda, which was posted appropriately under the charter of Broward County. It's proposed resolution number 2021R16, which is a resolution of the city commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, rescinding resolution number 3690 adopted on March the 30th of 2020, ratifying the mayor's declaration of a state of emergency declared on March 27th of 2020, resulting from the spread of the coronavirus COVID-19 due to executive orders 20, 21-101 and 21-102 signed by the governor, Ron DeSantis, on May the 3rd of 2021, authorizing and directing the city manager to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item, addendum 20, addendum number two. Thank you.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Castillo?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cyple. Discussion. Hearing then call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The number for the record, Mayor and Commissioner, is 3743.
Thank you. We've got to appoint two regular members to the Art and Culture Advisory Board for a two-year term. I have an appointment. I'd like to appoint Leo Mar Diaz as my appointment. And other, anybody else have an appointment?
Mayor, I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Did we, did we at the last meeting take action and appoint Ruth Rosenberg?
I'm not sure.
Yes.
We did.
I think we did. I think we did. So does that leave us then with just one open position then to be filled?
Yes.
So we'd have to choose between?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz or Ms. Culminera, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'd point to Leo.
Right, right. No, but I'm saying it would be between those two. Okay, fine. Second.
All right. League representatives, you've seen what happened with Tallahassee is finally over, and we got crucified. I don't know how it could have been any worse, but anything else?
Not good. And last, last meeting for President Calari tomorrow for the Broward League, and there'll be some discussion about starting to put together what actually happened in Tallahassee, although they haven't really had time to digest all of it yet, so it'll be kind of brief, but we'll have more to report once they start really getting their reports together.
All right. Commission items, you have a commission items, Commissioner Cyple.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Motion and, I'll just read it. Motion and discussion, motion for discussion and possible action to include the following awareness month in the City of Pembroke Pines, lighting up the building. February, heart month, red. April, child abuse awareness month, blue. April, autism awareness month, blue. August, international overdose awareness month, purple. September, environmental protection awareness month, green. October, breast cancer awareness month, pink. October, domestic violence awareness month, purple. October, national bullying month, bullying awareness month, blue. November, national diabetes month, blue. And that we work together with the city's communication department to provide information and to help raise awareness regarding these nationally recognized monthly observance, observances, topics, campaigns utilizing the city's social media platforms, City Connect, newspaper, Pines Media TV, and the city's website.
No, we did.
Second.
Mayor, thank, thank you. Mayor, and I, and I, I want to thank Vice Mayor Tom Good for last month and the month before, but then bringing it up again about awareness of these, these national issues, health issues that, that we, we all have unfortunately, you know, had some knowledge of on one way or the other. And I think that it was a fabulous idea to be able to use these buildings that we have and really light them, light them up. But the important, I mean, it's all important, it's all very important, but the real important part to me is that we do the education out to the community so they just don't think, oh, you made a building purple or green or look how pretty. They really need to know why we're doing that. And so that's why I wanted to include in this part of it that we use, you know, our, our media department to be able to, you know, through all of their resources to be able to explain why and how. And certainly, this may not, I'm sure it's probably not the whole entire list, but what, what I could find and things that I know that we've already acknowledged through our city on, on, through the, through the years. So if there are others, I would certainly encourage my colleagues to, you know, motion and put it, put items on and, and see how we go. I, I would just caution that, that we don't just throw everything on there because it takes away the importance of these really significant issues and that we can, we seriously consider if we're going to add something else, that it meets a pretty high criteria in order to be placed on here and, and to not take anything away from any of these important ones. So, Mayor, that's my motion.
All right. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Second?
I had a comment.
So Castillo? Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
I also, I also think it's a great idea. I think, I think lighting is a great visual way to get people's attention. I would like to take it into the neighborhoods. I would like to encourage people through the information that if you care about a particular thing, you know, use your garden lights, you know. There are bulbs available in all these different colors, and I think it's a great thing to bring into communities. So we should encourage the HOAs, we should encourage the community associations, residents, if they're willing, if they're willing, during these particular months to outfit their, their, you know, lawn lights. What do you call them? The garden lights, I guess, in the front of the house?
Some of the communities, like the entrances, they could light up.
Yeah.
Enters with colors.
I think, I think that's a great idea, and, and what it does is it brings the community even more together around issues of concern for all of us. So I, I think it's very good. We now have these beautiful monuments that are out there. It can announce what these months are and ask folks, you know, why, why are we pink this month? We're pink this month for breast cancer prevention. Why are we blue this month? We're blue this month for, you know, right. So I think, I think that those are, those are great things to do in communities, and I very much welcome that. Great spirit.
And I tell you, you've got more compliments on our signs located throughout the city.
Yep.
Telling everybody what we're doing.
It's a winner.
We need to do a little better on the website, and you heard some comments tonight. We have to go back and do that a little bit.
We're going to need one in front of city center so people know what's playing.
Yeah. Okay, city attorney, I was told, I was told by the city attorney that we have to have a motion on my item to appoint somebody.
2022.
I, I never knew we had to do that.
Mayor, can we take a vote on my item first?
No, let's go back and, let's go back and just get my item. Get that out of the way. We need a motion to approve, Leo.
Well, you made it, and Commissioner Cyple actually seconded it. She did.
Or the CS.
There's no vote called. Correct.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, who, who wanted to speak? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I just wanted to echo both Commissioner Cyple and Commissioner Castillo. They, they did a great job tag teaming this item here. I, I like the idea of being able to light our facilities. I like the idea of being able to push this out into our, all of our social medias or other media outlets, and I like the fact that we can educate them what it is and also ask them, as Commissioner Castillo had said, to light up their own houses and, you know, with the uplighting type of features at the entryways, some of these things. That would be so cool to see this city.
Yeah.
You know, unified, and that way I really thank you guys for that.
We get criticized sometimes by not lighting up the city, but we, we light up city centers during the Christmas holiday.[1699.28]